At this time, I'd like to open up the regular session of the City of Crescent City. And is there anything to report out from closed session?
No actions were taken in closed session. I would note for the record that the council will be returning to closed session after the close of regular business. No action expected to be reported out of that either.
Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Here.
Councilmember Hawley?
Here.
Mayor Protam Enya?
Here.
Mayor Murray?
Here, thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask the young people in the audience who are from the Girl Scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is an acknowledgement for a proclamation and recognition of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, celebrating its 100th year anniversary. And I've asked our city clerk, who is a former Girl Scout, to read the proclamation.
This is a proclamation and recognition of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, celebrating its 100-year anniversary. Whereas, on March 12, 1912, the first Girl Scout meeting was held in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas, this first meeting was led by Juliette Gordon Low, the founder of Girl Scouts of the USA, after visiting the founders of both Boy Scouts and Girl Guides in England. And whereas, since this first meeting, more than 50 million girls have participated in the Girl Scout movement during their childhood. And that number continues to grow as Girl Scouts of the USA continues to inspire, challenge, and empower girls everywhere. And whereas, there are currently 47,000 girl and 32,000 adult members in the Northern California Council and 3.2 million members in the USA. And whereas, through its membership in the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, WAGGGGS, Girl Scouts of the USA is part of a worldwide family of 10 million girls and adults in 145 countries. And whereas, Girl Scouts is the largest, longest-running, and most effective leadership program for girls in not only the nation, but the world. And whereas, 69% of current women US senators and 65% of women in the House of Representatives were Girl Scouts when they were girls. And whereas, 55% of all women astronauts are former Girl Scouts, and former Girl Scouts have flown in over one-third of all space shuttle missions. And whereas, an estimated 80% of women business executives and business owners were once Girl Scouts. And whereas, countless women educators, scientists, and women in the media and performing arts discovered their passions and talents as Girl Scouts. And whereas, 64% of today's female leaders listed in Who's Who of American Women in the United States were once Girl Scouts. And whereas, Girl Scouts in the 1900s developed the same core values while learning housekeeping and forestry badges as girls today learn while earning computer technology and financial literacy. And whereas, we know that Girl Scouts develops girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, are proud to join the Girl Scouts of Northern California in recognizing the 100th anniversary of Girl Scouts in the USA.
Now, if all the Girl Scouts and their leaders could stand up here and face that way, and the City Council will stand behind you and will take a picture. (inaudible) 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 The mayor has it in her hands. (inaudible) 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 Thank you. Thank you, girls.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Bye, guys.
we need a polled vote for that.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. Could you please pull a vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hawley?
Aye.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Enya?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries unanimously with one absentee. All right, on to communications, public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and if you're a city or county resident for the record. And public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to public hearings. Note, if you challenge a decision of the City Council in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the City Council at or prior to the public hearing, government code cited number 65009. And we have two items, but we're going to postpone item number B until the City Planning Commission hears it, so item number 5A.
Actually, what we need to do is hold the public hearing on that and then continue it to the next meeting.
For 5A also?
5B.
5B, that's what I said.
Yeah, we need to hold the public hearing and continue.
But don't we have 5A also?
Correct.
So we can do 5A?
Yes.
Yes. So, Mr. Taylor?
What we're bringing forward tonight is a, what we're asking for is a resolution to give the City Manager authority to approve consolidated coastal development permits, in which permitting authority is shared with the California Coastal Commission. This request is actually kind of brought to us by the Harbor District. They're working on their coastal trail project, and they're kind of, their trails and promenade project they have going on right now. And I have some pictures, I'll present to you in a minute here. Basically, back around 2007, Public Resources Code was amended to allow consolidated coastal development permits. Again, like the title says, the permits can only be consolidated where the authority is shared with the California Coastal Commission. So before I get too much into that, I'll bring up some of the photos here to better explain. So what we're looking at here is the state retained jurisdiction within the City Crescent City, and that's everything that's in that red hatching here. So basically, what that means, whoops, what that means for us is any coastal development permits in any of this hatching area would actually go directly to the California Coastal Commission, that wouldn't be heard locally by us. What this represents is basically where the mean high tide line was at one time. So all this land around the harbor here is all fill, but the state actually says they retain jurisdiction over those titled lands that were there at one time, so their mind hasn't changed. And I'll come back to this a little later. This is a photo of the Harbor's project that they currently have in place. And so you can see what they're looking at. This is one of their trails, but you can see it comes through the city's jurisdiction. This represents a sea limit line through here. So it comes through the city, goes out into what are county-controlled coastal area, and then back down, drops this part here around the boat base, and out here, it all, we, within the state's permitting jurisdiction. So hence, we look at projects like this, it makes sense to actually have the consolidated permits. It saves staff time, it saves a lot of time having to come to the city for coastal development permit, then applying to the state for a permit, and go into the county for a permit. And also, you run the risk, these permits could also be appealed to the state, and then you kind of run through the whole process again. To kind of further drive this home, this is the two cities, two parcels within this city, both owned by the Harbor District. If you probably recognize, this is where the dredge spoils are, right in this area. But they also own this little sliver of land right here. So just for example, this part here falls outside the state's jurisdiction. So anything here would come to our local, come to the city through our local program, and anything here would go directly to the state. So as you can vision, with that trail project that they propose, coming up this direction and kind of skirts right along the edge here, you'd have to, most likely, you'd be going for a little part of the trail, you'd be going to the state for a development permit, and another little portion of it, you'd be coming to the city. So I'm going to go with the resolution real quick. So what we're asking for here, and this cites the Public Resources Code section that allows for the consolidation of the coastal development permits. And basically, what the Act says is that all parties have to agree upon the consolidation. So say, the county would have to agree, city has to agree, the state has to agree, and the applicant would all have to agree to this consolidation. Also, what we have here, consolidations may only proceed where public participation is not substantially impaired by the review consolidation, and that's actually in the Act itself. So if you're looking back at such projects, like, say, if you had a project inside of Mr. Bosch's project, if it fell in both jurisdictions, something like that wouldn't be allowed to be consolidated. You don't want to degrade the process, not allow people to have their say locally, obviously. It would be done on appeal to the Coastal Commission. I want to go back, and for us, so we're asking, we're asking is to give the City Manager authority, and what this allows them to do, any requests that come to us, you know, obviously we'd be reviewed by the City Manager or staff prior to agreeing to any consolidation. And so, since we're asking for the permission, this could be anything within this shared jurisdiction in here. And if you look at the land here, it's approximately 81 acres that's in the state's jurisdiction and the kind of the core area along the harbor here. This pretty much is the area that represents any type of development, you're really not going to have any development along the beach. But if you look at it, most of the land, between Beachfront Park from here, the RV Park from here, and Dredge Spoil piles down here, are mostly within the city's control. You have, I think, out of 81 acres, about nine acres as privately-owned property, and the development potential on that property is fairly low due to some wetland issues out there. So we really will envision, what we're asking, I'll back up a little bit. What the Government Resources Code says, you can either consolidate these projects each time by a resolution, or you can just give authority to one person, such as the City Manager, to just be able to approve these. And we cut down on staff time, so we don't have to keep coming back on smaller projects or, say, public works projects, which we really envision what we'd be looking at here. And it sounds like the Harbor District might come back again, although, six years I've been here, this is the first time anybody's asked for a consolidated permit. So they're few and far between, this isn't something that comes along all the time. And for us, we'd probably be looking, like I said, about maybe trail projects within the park, or possibly, say, you're running a pipeline from the treatment plant across the park, maybe over to swimming pool or something like that, where we wouldn't have to apply to the state and go through our local process, we can just go to the state and consolidate it. It just kind of streams like that process for smaller projects like that. That's kind of my presentation, I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Any technical questions for Mr. Taylor? I just have one, so if we were to do the gray water for irrigation in that area, would we have to get a permit for that?
Correct. I mean, technically, that would require a development permit, now whether or not they would grant us a waiver, which they do sometimes, but we'd still be asking them for permission or a permit.
Any other questions, technical question?
You know, there's still, there was a, excuse me, a letter from the Harbor, but it's not included.
You should have received that as attachments, that we're saying. I have a copy of it here.
And I didn't see the...
What's it basically saying, because we don't have that?
I didn't see the resolution in here either.
Right.
The resolution and attachments were forwarded to you guys via email on Wednesday.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I got it.
I have a copy of it here, if you'd like to see it.
I read it, she sent it online.
That's right, I'm just going to grab my code right here.
And this is what the letter, they're asking for the consolidated permit, for their current project that showed.
I have a question. Is there another question right now? Or...
Good.
On the back page of the agenda report you prepared, where it says, for example, a public works project that includes the installation of a water main or sewer line that extends from the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, if you were to install a water main or sewer line, do you need Coastal Commission to do that?
Only if it goes across into this state jurisdiction. Now, obviously, anything down in the coastal zone would require that. But if you see treatment plants in our local, so that would go through our local process, but if it was outside that, in that hatched area, then that would require state permission. And those are just for examples, I mean, we don't have any projects in the works, that's just a what-if scenario.
Okay. Any other technical questions? Okay, I will open this up to public comment, is there any public comment on this topic? Mr. Young?
Thank you. My name is Richard Young, I'm the CEO of the Harbor District. I brought with me tonight Mr. Ernest Perry, who's also the harbor planner, and we'd like to ask Mr. Perry to speak to this, just so that he can perhaps clarify any confusion about exactly where this project would apply. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I brought copies of the original request, if you want them, and I also brought a hard copy of the map that Eric put up for you. But as you can see from the project that the Harbor District is pursuing, it crosses all three permit jurisdictions, which would require us to file three separate coastal permits and run the risk of having conflicts, which, as we all know, in the coastal zone, those seem to happen quite frequently. But this consolidated permit process, the way it's been structured, allows the City Manager to make the determination when this is appropriate, or whenever, even if it was appropriate, not necessarily to agree to it. But in this case, it's the coastal trail and the promenade projects that we've been working on for the last year. And again, they cross all three elements, so this process would help us expedite the permit process with our friends at the Coastal Commission. It's also, as Eric points out, a process that you can use to your own benefit. The county, once they adopted a similar process, they've used it for their own public works projects a couple of times, and it's expedited the permit process for them.
When you said that three jurisdictions, you mean the California Coastal Commission, and then the county local coastal plan, and the city local coastal plan, is that what you're talking about, or...
That's correct.
Yeah, I could, I could go a little further, if you look at that picture, it's up there. So you can see how this portion of the trail would come through city-owned property, would be our local. This portion here kind of skirts the city and the states. As you get through here, this falls into the county. As you get down in this direction, anything, basically along Starfish Way, if you kind of drew a line across here, it may would come in here along, but that would probably be the state's retained jurisdiction in the harbor. So therefore, you can see it also crosses the state's jurisdiction again, so you're looking at three different entities that would be involved.
Right. I kind of asked that question for the public, too, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly as well. And any other questions for Mr. Perry? Thanks for being here, Ernie.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on this?
Is this part of what you're calling the annexation of the harbor?
No.
What is this part called?
This is to consolidate coastal permits, where the shared, we share jurisdiction with the harbor. This is not about annexation.
Is there any financial impact on the county, or the city, or the harbor?
Nope.
On the residents of the people?
Not of the citizens of Crescent City, there isn't, no.
Are they giving up any of their future rights?
No.
No. It would probably be saving us money, because we wouldn't have to have three different entities applying for permits.
And that's just that one little area right there, how many square feet is that involved? You said acres, though.
I think...
Is it acres or square feet?
Eighty-one acres.
It's only in the...
You're pointing out a few feet, I see.
It's only in the state's retained jurisdiction, what we're looking at here. It's basically all parklands, like Beachfront Park, RV Park, and over to the Harbor's Dredge Spoil.
And who will own that, then?
The same entities.
It stays the same.
Yeah.
It's only to consolidate a permit, when the harbor wants to build out some stuff.
Is this a one-time deal, or forever and ever?
They only have to do one permit.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other public comment?
And what is it you wanted to do there?
The coastal trail, for example?
Finish point.
No, I don't know. I never, is that that EDBG money? EB?
No, CDDG, no.
This is for Harbor's Coastal, so they've had several public meetings on it already, people have come down and talked about it.
The funding comes from the California Coastal Trail, is that correct?
The Conservancy.
Conservancy, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The funding for the project to date has been a combination of funds of the Harbor District and the California Coastal Conservancy.
Coastal Conservancy, yeah, okay, thanks.
This is why I'm thinking to do the public...
You've already had your public comment, sorry. Is there any other public comment on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I have just a question about the resolution number. I don't have any opposition to the resolution itself, but on the agenda, it talks about 212-08, and on the resolution itself, it seems to say 21206?
You're right. Which one is it?
I just want to make sure we make the right motion.
It's six, that's the correct.
Six? Okay. I would move for resolution number 2012-06.
Second.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Enya?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're delaying 5B in order for the Planning Commission to have a review of it first.
Mayor, what we'd like you to do, because it was published as a public hearing for tonight at the City Council, we'd like you to read out, call the item, open the public hearing.
Oh.
See if there's anybody that wishes to testify. If so, take their testimony, and then, without closing the public hearing, continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
Does that make sense? In other words, we're opening the record but not closing it tonight.
Okay, I didn't read that correctly. So on to item 5B, public hearing. Okay. I didn't read that correctly. So, on to item 5B, public hearing. And... Item, I'll read 5B just for clarification, is to conduct a public hearing to consider and adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Number 20112-... Is that, would that be seven?
Yes.
Okay. A resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City declaring certain city-owned property known as APN 118-645-02 and 03 as surplus to the needs of the city, and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the sale of such surplus in accordance with applicable state law.
At this point, what staff will do is bring a full report back to the city council at the next meeting, but if there's anybody in the audience that would like to...
Okay, I'll open it up for public hearing. Is there any public comment on this, item number 5B? You need to step up to the mic if you want to make a public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, I have a closed public comment, and we will...
No. Do not close it. Leave it open and continue it.
I'll continue it until our next meeting. I apologize.
Is it to our next meeting? Is that when you want it?
Yes.
Okay.
And apologize for the confusion on this item.
So, we will continue it until March 19th, 2012. Right? Now that we got that out of the way. On to reports. Receive a quarterly report from the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Gina Zatola.
Madam Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. It's time for my quarterly report, and I'm going to start off actually by wrapping up the end of the year and starting off with September, and you should actually have the sheet in your packet, so you can follow along. The visitor center physical count in September, we had 2,287. October, 1053. November, 499. And finishing in December with 438, which gave us a total of 18,258 guests that came to the door looking for information, which was up about 3.49% from 2011, where we had 18,000, I'm sorry, we had 17,643 people come to the doors. Visitor packets that were mailed out, we were down about 2%, almost 2.1%. And relocation packets were up about 67%. And that 67% really represents not only what we're mailing out, but again, that's what, if there's any hiring at Pelican Bay, and they want relocation packets, they come to us. If there's locums, or tenants, or hospitalists at the hospital, or traveling nurses, they come to us for those as well. So, not bad. Right now, we're kind of seeing, we're ahead for the year as far as where we were last year, the first few months of the year, as far as physical count of people coming through the doors. But it does seem a lot lighter to me than last year, but the numbers are not showing that, so I'm surprised. Sales are really down, and I think that's to, you know, people holding on their pocketbook a little tighter, stuff.
I noticed we dropped quite a bit in April. That must have been because of the tsunami.
Yes, exactly. I think that was due to the tsunami. Currently, the chamber is, of course, starting to plan and work on 4th of July. And as this council is aware, I do have a hole as far as my fireworks sponsor. I have lost one of them. So I'm looking for a partner to pick up that portion of the fireworks that's split between the city of Crescent City, the chamber, and now someone new. So I'm working with Walmart, Frontier, anybody I can talk to to try to get in and see if we can find a solution to that. Our biggest event of the year that we all know draws thousands of people into town, fills all the hotels, RV parks, campgrounds, it's important. So I'm working with everybody to try to come to some sort of resolution, so that we have the fireworks show.
Have we had any themes submitted yet for 4th of July?
Yeah, we've had a few themes submitted. Yeah, we have about six right now. So we'll be wrapping that up on March 16th and making a decision, and then, of course, we'll be putting out a memo stating that we were looking for grand marshals. And, yeah, so... But although, there's going to be a fireworks show, I just want to make sure this council knows that we're going to do everything in our power to make sure this happens, and I know that you all know that, that we understand the importance of it, and how important it is for our businesses. So...
So you've contacted Walmart and Frontier, and who else?
Yeah, lots of the people, Green Diamond. Really, there's a process, you know, Walmart has a new process that they didn't have three, four years ago, and that is really going through the foundation. It's not handled here locally. Everything's gone, it's been taken back from, you know, it's back in corporate headquarters, so you have to really go through a long process online. I've done the application. I'm working closely with Nick, the manager for Walmart. I've submitted tons of documentation, three pages of a list of everybody that's actually involved in the 4th of July, and that benefits, whether it's a financial benefit or just being part of the parade and being seen. It's three pages long. So I think he understands the importance. I just need to make sure that it's a home run.
How about Center Coast Hospital?
No, it's not an option. As you know, Center Coast Hospital Regionalized is going through that process. And, so a lot of things could change, but as far as sponsorships goes, they're down. They actively participate. They are one of the parade sponsors every year. I hope to be able to secure that again this year, along with Lucky Seven, if we make that ask. But everybody knows that these are not great economic times, so we're working on all solutions.
And Center supports us with the physicians' recruitment and retention, so...
Right.
They're more health-oriented, rather than...
Absolutely.
Party-oriented.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate a written report this time, Gina.
You're welcome. I'll make sure you always have that, and get that to Gene, it's in your packet. Are there any questions?
Gina, I just have a little question, as I was looking forward to your presentation.
Okay.
I was also reading some of the articles in the Sacramento Bee, and they kind of paint us with a negative broad brush in some of the comments that the reporter had made, like that salmon, we're known for salmon, Pelican Bay State Prison, and illicit drugs. And I found that disturbing after all the work we've done to put a positive spin on the area.
Me, too.
And I know it's positive, because I came from Sacramento, and that's why I moved from Sacramento, is for the lifestyle here. Is, has the chamber considered a response? Maybe it's, maybe nothing said is better, I don't know, but should there be a response that we're more than just salmon, Pelican Bay, and illicit drugs?
Um, you know, it's, in the past, I mean, I can bring that up to my board, for sure. I know that Bob Berkowitz did write a rebuttal, or whatever you want to call it, comment on their page, and there's been a couple other comments. So he did comment about, you know, our beauty and what else we have to offer. But certainly, I can bring that up to my board sometimes. I know that my board feels, at times, that sometimes it's better not to say anything, because some people are just not going to win. But it really, really upset me, because third generation, this is my hometown, you know, that's, those are fighting words. So, you know, it's upsetting to hear someone say something like that.
It's difficult for me. I remember living in Sacramento, I was a probation officer then, and I actually carried a gun from room to room in my house.
Wow.
And I came up here because of the lifestyle, and so, yeah, it upset me, too, that Sacramento felt that they could do this.
I think, sorry, I was going to say, I think I hear Councilman Holly volunteering to write a letter.
I believe I could. I just wanted to see if there's great opposition in this group, but I'd be glad to help.
And I would like to bring that to my board as well, to see if we can write a letter from the Chamber of Commerce, and how disappointed we are in not painting the picture accurately of our, of our area.
Thank you.
So I agree. Thank you for bringing up, saying that.
Wait till they see us on Today in America.
Yeah. Yes, Today in America.
Any other questions for Gina? Well, thanks for all your great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And I really miss being on the board.
We missed you, too. Thank you.
Any public comment on Gina's report? Seena, I will close public comment, and we will move on to a report from our Executive Director, Bill Brentfro, from the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Thank you for letting me make this presentation to you, that I think will be up in just a second.
Well, we're waiting for that. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you.
Oh, Eric closed it for you.
You got it.
I had it up for you, and Eric closed it, so, close.
What is the close button on this? There we go. Thank you. The city manager asked me to try to keep this brief under 45 minutes, so I'm going to work on that. Actually, he said 10, so we'll work on that, not counting that little delay.
We have you on a timer.
Right, good. Excellent. So the top two stories for economic development in 2011 were the tsunami. As we know, it's about a year ago today that we, that event occurred here, and though it was tragic to our community, the good side, or the silver lining, if you will, is it's going to bring approximately $40 million, 30 to 40 million dollars into the community, in terms of funds to rebuild our harbor. And when it's done, of course, we'll have the newest, most upgraded harbor on the northern California coast. Regarding that, Tri-Agency helped the harbor look for funds out there. After the event, we talked with other entities about how we can accelerate the permitting process, and we talked with non-governmental organizations, NGOs, about trying to get assistance for the displaced fishermen and their family, families. That didn't go so well with those organizations, because they're primarily set up for natural disasters that involve providing emergency medical supplies, and emergency housing, and that sort of thing. They viewed it more as like a large plant in a town closing down and causing sudden unemployment for a whole bunch of the community. So, but we did look there. The other major event for 2011 for Tri-Agency was the completion of the comprehensive economic development strategy for the community. This was a community-wide effort, representing business leaders, governmental officials, tribal leaders, and nonprofit organizations that all came together to take a look at what we want to try to accomplish in the community. That all gets rolled up, submitted to the U.S. Economic Development Administration for approval. That's approval of the SEDs, as it's referred to, is a prerequisite for many federal grants. So the fact that we have an approved SEDs allows organizations and entities within the county and the city to apply for federal monies. Without it, oftentimes, you can't apply for those funds. In terms of trying to recruit new businesses into our community, last year, we saw substantial increase in the number of inquiries. We saw 22 site selectors contact me last year compared to just four in 2009. I attribute that primarily to the increased visibility of the community through public outreach, as well as completion of our infrastructure projects, which are on the radar for many of these companies. What we're seeing is there's still a couple of infrastructures out there that we'll probably never have, that kind of keep certain businesses from coming into our communities. For example, we don't have rail, we don't have natural gas, and those are kind of out of our ability to change. One of Tri-Agency's mandates is to keep track of the HAS199.com, or this was a document created by the Council of Economic Advisers several years ago, and the acronym stands for Harbor Airport Sewer Highway 199 and .com, or broadband. Where Tri-Agency helped in those, moving those infrastructures forward, we're in the harbor. Again, we looked for financing, and we're continuing to work with the harbor on financing. Late last fall, we identified some EDA money that had not been available before, so we're going to go after that. At the airport, again, it's about financing, trying to find the match funds for the Federal Aviation Administration's monies. If we can get those matches funds together, we can proceed with the airport improvement project, which is not only just the terminal, but some other improvements out there. The sewer was a big, a big event. Last year, we completed the wastewater treatment plant, and got that online, and the harbor went out of the business of treating wastewater, and they were happy about that. We did that by connecting the seafood processing plant into the city's wastewater treatment plant. So it was kind of a win-win for everybody. On Highway 199, I can't take much credit for that. That's primarily, and Ms. Tamara Layton, who's basically just bird-dogged that for years, but she has been very effective at that. And if you've been up 199 in the last six months or so, you've seen the improvement, some of the improvements that are visible. For example, the big rockfall protection near Patrick Creek. There are other less visible improvements that are going on, and that's moving forward as well. Completion for that's 2014 to 2016, somewhere in that range, so it's, we're inching towards that. And that will, of course, allow us to get the STAA-approved trucks into the community. And then, this is sort of the third big event that occurred in 2011. A contractor for Tri-Agency, a gentleman consultant named John Irwin, was successful in convincing the Oregon Health Network and the consortium of folks that you see listed under that, in funding what we call the Gasky Gap, or actually, it's more than the Gasky Gap, it's the redundant line from Gasky to Grants Pass. And when we get that fiber optic cable completed, we'll have a nice looped circular fiber optic system that will allow us to stay up, in terms of if someone cuts it with a backhoe somewhere, the electrons will flow the other way around, and the system will stay up and running. That has been completed from Grants Pass to Past O'Brien, Oregon. The last stretch is primarily through Six Rivers National Forest and the Siskiyou National Forest. The Forest Service and our congressional representatives have all banded together and helped us get the permits through that, and so that's good to go. It's funded, it's permitted, it's designed, and it will go, that last stretch of about 32 miles will be done as soon as weather permits up in the mountains, and expected completion date is July of this year. Why that's important to our communities, once that's done, we'll have a very robust, high-speed internet with a great deal of capacity or bandwidth. This, we can market in the Bay Area to firms and tell them, bring their software companies up here, because you can get on the internet, it's got high speed, a lot of capacity, and your folks will have access to a great quality of life. So we think it's going to be a great deal for us. Tri-Agency has a couple of real property interests. One was the former Surfside Bar and Restaurant, or Brew Pub and Restaurant. Now we have a tenant in there who's brought us into the global economy. 100% of their export, or their business is export-related at this point. They're exporting their products to South Korea, so we're part of the Pacific Rim global economy now. The other real property interest was the Bistro Gardens, and we've done a little different spin on that. Rather than liquidating the furniture, fixture, and equipment in there, we've actually cleaned it up, and we're marketing it as a turnkey restaurant with a great view of South Beach. We have a couple of tenants that were still, are interested parties, are trying to get in there, and the goal is to have someone in there before the tourist season gets here in earnest. The California Association of Local Economic Developers, or CAL-Ed, asked me to speak last year at the annual California statewide conference on the economic impact of the tsunami to our community. Much of California was unaware of just what happened here, and so it was a very good opportunity to show them the resilience of our community, how we bounced back, and how we're going to make it better after this is all said and done. I worked with city manager Gene Palazzo, and the county administrative officer Jay Serina, to coordinate the interviews and the shooting locations for the Today in America piece, which is in post-production now, expected to be out for approval towards the end of this month. We'll get a chance to take a look at it, make sure they say Del Norte instead of Del Norte Day, and that sort of thing. So that'll be good, and it'll be marketed across the United States. As far as regional collaboration, mostly I've been working with... As far as regional collaboration, mostly I've been working with Curry County folks. We've come to the conclusion, which is pretty obvious, that once folks are in this part of the world, tourists and visitors, that it's in everyone's best interest to keep them over here as long as we can. So, if we can get them to stay by educating them to all the opportunities and wonderful things to see and do and they stay for a couple of extra meals or even better, a couple of extra days, that's all in our regional economic best interest. The now film commissioner Cassandra Hazelton came to the Tri-Agency basically to test the waters and see if we were interested in having a film commissioner. She basically sold the Tri-Agency's board and we worked with the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Bureau to help, and they funded her for a year. So, she's a former film producer, or, sorry, TV producer and she actively markets Crescent City and Del Norte County to major film studios, independent film companies, TV ad companies and print media ad companies. So, we actually have someone out there actively promoting us for people to come up here and do their shoots. I applied for and received a Resource Advisory Committee Woody Biomass Utilization Grant to take a look at, can we do something more beneficial with all the woody biomass that's created annually in our forests here? And we are moving forward on that, we've got the analytical data from the woods and now we're working on agreements with the Forest Service to bring that material out of the woods. And then, the final phase will be to produce a feasibility study and look at how we can attract an energy company to the community and use as woody biomass resources. We also recruited or entered into a contract with the Del Norte Economic Development Corporation to serve as our fiscal agent and brought those resources back into the county. For many years, they had resided with the Humboldt Area Foundation down in Humboldt County, so those monies now stay in the county. The next two slides that are in your packet, basically, these are items that are in the 2011-2012 Action Plan for Tri-Agency. They're ongoing projects and we'll continue to work on those for the rest of the year. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Bill?
Yes. On your leads page, you mentioned we don't have natural gas and we don't have rail, but what about shipping via sea?
The, I've spoken with the harbor about things like having cruise ships and that sort of thing and our harbor's really not set up for that. It's set up for smaller draft vessels. There was a study, I understand, several years ago about seagoing barges moving up and down the coast, but that's, again, I haven't looked into that. And we haven't had any requests for shipping by ocean.
I can kind of address that a little bit, having been on the local transportation commission because I think it was two summers ago, we had a regional conference down in Humboldt County and they were exploring that option for barge shippage. And so, it's not out of the question, but we'd have to be set up a lot better and, and have our harbor in good shape before we could consider hauling back and forth by sea.
Getting back to the cruise ship idea, I remember when I was in Greece, they would take our cruise ship and then offload us into smaller boats and bring us to shore. So, I don't see why we can't do something like that here.
We could certainly look into that, you're, you're correct, they often anchor a mile or so offshore and then they have their shuttle craft that deliver people to shore.
I think pretty much all cruise ships do that. Other questions for Bill?
Yeah, I have another one or two. Who owns the broadband?
That's kind of saying, like saying who owns the television airwaves. There are, there are different pieces of the broadband are licensed out to different companies, so...
That's what I want to ask.
Yes.
Who are the licensing companies currently?
Well, in our area, the number one broadband provider is Charter Communications, but Frontier also has access to broadband in our area. A company called LSI Networks has access, so there are a number of players.
So, just those three, Charter, Frontier and LSI Networks?
No, I'm, I'm sure there are others.
Warren Buffett. Haven't heard about him.
And I can look into that for you and get a list of...
I, I had a question. There was one picture, were those the hagfish? It looked like spare tires, but...
Those indeed were hagfish and the Top Blue Marine is exporting that as a highly desirable product to South Korea and they're a small, sort of eel-like looking creature, about two feet long. And, but they're actually a fish, they're not an eel.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, I thought, so, nice report, thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
The Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau funded Cassandra Hazelton for a year, when did the funding take place?
I, I just don't recall that answer. I can, again, I'll try to look up that information and get it to you.
I think Gina might have an answer, do you?
I don't have a definite answer, so I don't want to answer it.
Yeah, it's like last summer or fall, I mean...
Yeah, I think it was around in there, yeah. Anything else for Bill? That's it, nice report, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And one thing that Gina didn't mention, and this has to do with the film Del Norte, is that Gina's the permit person for all the films that are done in our community, so she's doing that too.
She's our point of contact for all.
But you guys are working very nicely together, so. We had a good idea to maybe, when we do one of our burns, to offer that up as one of our film location sites.
The city manager has made that offer to her and before we burned the El Patio Motel and a couple of other...
But they didn't go for it, yeah.
She, she was out there trying to market it, yes.
We actually had some of them, did get a permit, did do a shoot there.
Oh.
Oh, that's correct, yeah, that was...
Okay, all right. Anything else? Any public comment on Mr. Brentfro's presentation? Seeing none, I have a closed public comment. There is no continuing business and there is no new business, so we'll move on to city council items, any legislative matters?
I have no legislative matters to report.
Same with our city attorney?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Westphal, do you have anything to report out?
Yes, I attended the Tri-Agency's Economic Development Meeting and we have a strategic planning session scheduled for Saturday, March 24th, a three-hour meeting. I attended the Solid Waste Meeting, I also attended a high school function called Job Finders for Young Adults. And that's it.
Mr. Holly?
Yeah, I can, I can say that I'm a part of Tri-Agency. Starting with the lies, I think I mentioned this before, I don't want to get redone, but I feel like I'm putting pieces together and I appreciate that. I did have one question, I don't know if this is the time...
Or, or not, I, I'll go ahead and do it so everybody can hear me. In looking at the paper, there was the article on tsunami safety programs may face budget cuts federally. And I don't know if we as a city have come out and opposed those cuts, but it seems like something, given our history and given the fear that we all have that this could happen again and we've seen it happen in the recent past, I, it sounds like the county has weighed in on it to some extent. It'd be nice to have a letter, I think, at least go out from this body to indicate that we're in opposition to any cuts regarding tsunami safety.
I can do that, I can coordinate with the county and see what the county's done and see if we can let her off the state.
That's a good idea.
That'd be great, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I attended the airport, Airport Authority Meeting, Solid Waste Meeting, and also went to see a couple of the JC basketball games. And it was certainly nice to see our community filled up all of our hotels.
It's a great event.
Yes.
One thing that I wanted to give credit to Tri-Agency for is, in, in an indirect way, they did assist in funding a tsunami victim by helping the gentlemen that owned the fishing boat. So, I wanted to give you credit for that. And I received a certificate of appreciation from Lafco for being on their commission, which was very, very nice. And... See, I'm trying to read my own writing. Oh, and tomorrow, actually Wednesday, I'm going to be interviewed by the same paper that interviewed Mayor Slert when he was here regarding the tsunami. So, we're getting some press still regarding the tsunami. And with that, we will...
Madam Mayor, I forgot one thing, I wanted to hand in this agenda request to...
You can give it to...
Robin.
Our, our madam clerk?
To reevaluate and renegotiate contract with city attorney's office to reflect the economic conditions faced by our city.
And with that, that will close regular session and reconvene into closed session. Thank you all for being here.